I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr on June 12th. Let the record show that we do have quorum. Everyone being present, want to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here with us this morning. For everyone, would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
............................................................... Any public comments?
There's none, Your Honor.
Okay, first item is approval of minutes.
Official approved, I guess.
Moved in second to approve minutes. Discussion. All in fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. The next is a vendor's list.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Good morning, Commissioners' Court. Good morning, students, administrators, and everybody that is here today. Thank you so much for coming here. Bienvenidos a todos los que están aquí ahora, los estudiantes, las familias, la administración de la escuela, el profesor, y todos los padres. Gracias por estar aquí ahora, compartiendo serias en este día para nosotros. Tenemos una proclamation proclaiming Starr County Ape for the Odyssey of the Mind Team on behalf of Judge Eloy Vera and the Commissioners' Court. And I'm going to go ahead and read it, and then we'll have everybody come up here, okay? Starr County Commissioners' Court proclaims the month of June 2023 as World Champion General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary Odyssey of the Mind Team Month. Whereas, we congratulate General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary Odyssey of the Mind Team for dominating at World Finals in Lansing, Michigan, earning first place, and now considered World Champions. And, whereas they competed against 63 top teams across the world from countries such as USA, Mexico, Hong Kong, Singapore, Japan, China, Switzerland, Germany, South Korea, Poland, and France. And, whereas we would like to acknowledge their coach, Elia Sines, and the Odyssey of the Mind Team. Who formed the team members are Isabella Guerra, Ryder Santa Maria, Gilbert Alanis Jr., Sofia Carmona, Kasseri Garcia, Marielli Lopez, and Hector Rodriguez. The RGCC, the RGCG ISD Administration, staff, board members, and the community for their support of the team. And, whereas we recognize the valuable knowledge and expert, and experience that the students achieved, and know that this has enriched their lives and has a lasting impact on them. And, whereas the students have demonstrated great leadership which will transcend through time. Whereas Starr County Commissioners' Court and I are very honored of their accolades in becoming World Champions. And, therefore, be it resolved that I, Starr County Judge Eloy Vera, on behalf of the County of Starr, do proclaim, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary Odyssey of the Mind Team in Starr County, Texas. Congratulations.
Before you all come, come up front, let me, I just want to congratulate especially the students for the work that you all have done. I realize how much effort it takes and, and for you to get all the way to World and then win it, it's amazing. You know, it's really amazing the talent that we have here in Starr County, in, in everything, really. So it goes, it goes without saying that just because we're a small county does not mean that the sky is really the limit for you all. You know, I'm extremely proud especially of you all. Certainly, I'm proud of everything, all the accomplishments that happened in the county, but mainly you all, the Odyssey of the Mind. Because that is a, an academic World Champion. I mean, that, that's unbelievable. So again, congratulations to you. Congratulations to your parents, because I'm sure they put in a lot of time with you all. And of course, the administration, you know, congratulations to you all and the school as a whole. Again, we're really proud of you all. Thank you. Allow me if you all want to come up front.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. On behalf of our school district, our A-rated school district, and our school board of trustees, our administration, we want to thank each and every one of you for this huge honor. As you can see, we have sensational students in our county, and this is just the beginning. Some students are moving on to middle school, so we'll be starting a middle school team as well. So we look forward to more recognition and, you know, showcasing our students. But thank each, every, and one of you for helping, you know, throughout. So appreciate this this morning. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brennan. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that needs to come before the court at this time?
You're going to take the action on that item?
Yeah. Okay, let's go back to item eight, and do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
It's also moved in second.
Moved in second, all in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Let's go back to our regular agenda. First item is gas department. Ms. Guerra?
In your packet, you should have the gas report. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Next item is the transfer station.
Also, in your packets are the two reports, April and May's. If you have any questions, let me know.
Unless you change the...
The format.
Yeah. I guess where you say surplus, it means...
Yes.
It's, it's a plus?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Justice Asser, Ms. Salinas.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioner. My report is in front of you. If you can follow me. Our total, total current collections for May 2023 for Starr County entities were 194,513 with 91 cents more. Our current collections in May 2022 are 286,204 with 51 cents. There was a total collection of 90, 91,690 with 60 cents less than last year. Our total delinquent collections just for Starr County were 231,241 with 55 cents. There was a total delinquent collection same time last year were 316,687 with 74 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of 85,446 with 19 cents less than last year. As of May 31st, the office has collected 90% of the projected current collections. Projected collections remaining are 1,732,835 with 66 cents. Also, the office has collected 60% of the projected delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are 1,151,32 with 56 cents out of the 2,900,000. Collections made through American Rescue Plan were 79,148 with 8 cents just for Starr County entities. Motor vehicle department, the motor vehicle collections for the, for county, for the county is 65,927 with 30 cents for this month. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Brennan.
Thank you.
County clerk, Ms. Salas.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Report should be in front of your areas. This shows collections from May to the 11th of June. We ran it all the way to the 11th. Just to highlight a couple of things here, our records management brought in a little over $8,000. Our copies brought in 3,461-80. Our records archive brought in 8,562. Total due to the general fund, the county clerk, was 24,447-05. We've had a good month. We have 48,518-55 collected so far. Just a couple of updates on our books have already been returned back to the county. We are finishing up the indexing, and it should be completed by August. On another note, to let your constituents know, if they do have soon name certificates, they must be renewed every 10 years, so...
What, what certificate?
The soon name certificates for businesses.
Oh, okay.
Anyone in your areas that have any questions on that, they must be renewed every 10 years. And if they don't have it anymore, they must fill out a withdrawal form, which is on our website. If not, they're going to get taxed under personal property. So those two things are real, real important. Of course, it'll help us bring in more money, because they need to renew those soon name certificates every 10 years. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Judges, Commissioners. This is the revenue report for the month of May 2023. Start with the USA Solutions at 1,500. Marshal Transport Services, 8,945. Marshal Medical Services, 1,0937. Housing for the US Marshals, 162,140. Hidal County Insurance Office at 214,892 for a total of 389,414. This is $82,000 more than the same time last year. And total collections for the year puts us at 2,999,861. The federal count for the month of June 1st was 97 federal inmates, Hidal County at 106, and Starr County inmates at 76 for a total housing of 279. The monthly average of 95 federal inmates and 112 Hidal inmates. And we should be at 75% amount collected for the projected revenues for the fiscal year.
Yeah, those, those numbers keep very consistent, and we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the report for May 2023. The total revenue is 230,316.50, and we show an increase of $27,164 for the month of May 2023 compared to the month of May 2022. We also show an increase of $15,672.50 on the collections for the month of May 2023 compared to the month of April 2023. And we have the currency exchange excess of $139.22, and the grand total for revenue for this month is, for last month, is 230,455.72. Do you have any questions, sir?
Yeah, that's quite an increase.
Yes.
Congratulations, that's great.
Doing very good.
Yeah. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is my report for the month of May 2023. If you could just please follow along with me. The ending balance for the general fund is at 5,789,931 with 27 cents. The ending balance for the road and bridge is at 1,336,950 with 54 cents. The enterprise funds ending balance is at 1,288,860 with 28 cents. The drainage district ending balance is at 3,742,192 with 23 cents, which brings the ending balance to, grand total to, of all funds, to 12,157,934 with 33 cents. Yes, are there any questions, please?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brennan. Auditor?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In your packet, I think, I believe you have two reports, the month for, excuse me, the one for April 2023 and the one for May 2023. I'm going to go ahead and present the one, the most current. From the eight months ending of May 31st, 2023, on page two are the general fund revenues. And it continues on to page three, year-to-date collected revenues, 15,616,775, with a remaining budget of 6,514,727.
Well, I'm sorry, where are you at?
Page three. The general fund revenues extended to two pages now. Page two and three. Okay. I move on to page four and five. Total year-to-date expended expenditures for the general fund are 14,72,970, with a remaining budget of 8,58,424. With an excess of revenue over expenditures of 1,543,797 on the general fund. I move on to page six. Budget summary for road and bridge. Total revenues year-to-date collected, 5,897,153. Year-to-date expenditures for road and bridge, 4,502,953, with an excess of revenues over expenditures of 1,394,200. I move on to page seven, where I list the enterprise funds. Year-to-date revenue for international bridge, 1,742,607. Year-to-date expenditures, 1,413,473, with an excess of revenues over expenditures of 329,134. Starr County Gas System, year-to-date revenues, 804,318, $18. Year-to-date expenditures, 595,134, with an excess of revenues over expenditures of 209,184. Starr County Transfer Station, we have a year-to-date revenues collected, 764,222. Year-to-date expenditures, 1,68,513, with an excess of expenditures over revenues of 304,290. Our debt service, we've collected the year-to-date revenues, 24,389. One of the special revenue funds for the ARPA, I would like to just mention that we have a remaining budget of 5,516,924 for the ARPA fund. On page eight, I provide the debt summary for the county. We have a total debt outstanding of 1,235,382. And I'd just like to include a comment for the county audit. Right now, the, all the information has been with the auditor, external auditor. We've been working with them, and hopefully, we should have completed audit perhaps the end of the month, maybe close to early July. But I can provide another confirmation later on.
Okay, so, and really, the, the audit is due at the end of the month, right?
Yes.
So we're getting there.
Yes, we are. We started a bit later than usual. We've only been, maybe started in April, late March, and we started with the 22 audit. So we got a couple of months.
Hopefully, we can get it by the end of the month, and if not, within the first couple of weeks.
Yes, I believe so. Okay, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. Moving on with our agenda. Item nine is an action item, and this is to go out on base for hauling services for the transfer station. Ms. Guerra? She stepped out. Well, let's, let's skip that one, and let's go to item 10. It's an action item, and this is for final approval of Highland at Embassy subdivision. Mr. Garcia?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, we're asking for final for Highland at Embassy subdivision. It's in precinct four.
Everything is good to go?
It's ready to go.
I assume.
I have a motion for approval. Second, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is also final approval on the re-subdivision of Lot 38 of Los Anisos subdivision.
Yes, a re-subdivision of Lot 38 of Los Anisos. It's in precinct three, and we're asking for final.
Where is that?
Pipeline Road, the Roper, Mr. Roper.
Okay. I just want to...
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salas. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to remove Cortez Street from 911 database, and for Division Street to remain as is in La Grulla. Commissioner?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know why they have this two names, but actually, it's Division Street, the one that we should keep.
Okay, so...
Cortez Street. I just want to move it.
Okay. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is also an action item, is to correctly name County Road on FM 755 from Santa Catarina to Medanitos Road. Commissioner?
Judge, there's been some delays in services of the ambulance through 911. The street or the, that county road has always been known as Medanitos, and that's how it's identified by the, by tech dot on the highway. They have, for some reason, in the 911 service, it comes out as Santa Catarina Road, and there's been some confusion in responding to calls, so... They want to, or the, the people that live there are recommending that it stays as Medanito Road.
Okay, so...
From Highway 70, 755 all the way to, to, to the end of that county road.
Is that your motion?
I have to move.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 14 is an action item, and this is update travel rates for 2023. Ms. Salas?
Yes, Judge, I wanted to present the new rates under the US government. These are the updated for January 1st, 2023, the new rates. I wanted to propose them to the Counties Commissioners' Court. Mileage went up 11 cents. From, our current rate is 55 cents, I'm proposing a, updated to 66 cents. The meals, current rate was $13, proposed rate is still, remains at 13. Lunch went up $1, up to 15. Dinner reimbursement went up $3, from $23 to $26. Incidental rates remain the same. Hotel advances, lodging per night went up $2, so proposing to move it up from $96 to $98.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
On, on the lodging.
Mm-hmm.
If the, the hotel, wherever the conferences are being held...
Yes.
If they're running more than the $98, who's responsible for making up that difference?
I guess the travel employee can submit a claim reimbursement, and we'll pay in the difference.
Okay, so the 98 can vary?
Yes.
If the hotel is, is higher?
Yeah, because I just made reservation, and I think it's ridiculous, Your Honor, but that's what, to have to go to that conference?
Yeah.
For three days, $1,912, and I already paid them a price.
Yeah.
With $98, you can't even get close to that. And, you know, and the $15 a meal, man, you only can eat some hot dog, because you're going to get... Yeah, I mean, that's right. I mean, that, I mean, that's all you can get. I mean, go eat some...
No, no vegetables, no nothing. That's all you can get.
I mean, that's the truth, you know? You know, it's ridiculous, you know? And, and I've said, the hotel itself, I think it's a ripoff, because they're trying to take advantage of the county. And I, I don't, I don't think you can get a hotel for $98 unless you go to, what's that, outside on Motel 6 with a tent. But there is, where we're going, is for three days, $1,912, that's what I had to pay.
Okay.
For three days.
Yeah, it's $407 a night.
Almost $800 a night.
Well, these are state rates, and they're just temporary reimbursements until you come back and reimbursed.
We can get reimbursed, but we pay the difference, which is fine.
Yes, the county will cover expenses.
What, what about meals?
Meals?
That stays pretty...
Yes, that's the maximum on meals for the state.
To the state?
Yes.
We don't have to follow state guidelines, don't we?
I believe we do.
You believe you do, or is it...
Yes.
That's the way they...
No, this is from the state. It's, it's a...
It's a mandate?
Yes. Well, it's not a statute, but it's something that the state provides.
Not a statute. I don't mean that it's a mandate, that's... Not a statute, I don't mean that it's a mandate, that's, you don't have to follow it. I mean, so, I mean, it's not a statute, you don't have to follow by it. That somebody else is doing it or recommending, this is a totally different story. Like I said, you're better off taking local bread and getting some cold cuts, you know, probably you can make it with it.
Well, we can't go any higher, these are state requirements and we can't go any higher for this.
You know, boiled eggs or boiled potatoes, you know, like making the spaghetti.
For the lodging, the county will cover the entire expense, but this is just like a travel advance. It's just like a temporary help before like all this expenditure is paid.
Let me ask you something else. Let's say you go, you go up there and sit on a table, I say, all the three commissioners or somebody else, you know, you meet up there and you pay a hundred dollar bill on the meal, what's going to happen?
It's going to be out of pocket. I guess it's going to have to be the remaining out of pocket.
Well, you know, and I have a problem with that. You know, most, the schools, the cities, whoever, you know.
Yes.
If they go and they take a, let's say we have guests that come into the county or they come to visit a commissioner and the commissioner says, well, I'll take you out to lunch. The commissioner has to pay for it out of his pocket?
Yes.
Or myself or anyone else?
Well, like meals are not covered, it's not a covered like expense. That's more like a fringe benefit and it's going to have to go to.
How do the cities and the schools, how do they circumvent that and they're able to pay?
I'm not sure how they do it. We don't cover meals, we don't pay for food.
It's happened to me, you know, when I have guests from Mexico or wherever and we go and I pay. I never submit it because I know I won't get reimbursed. But but I don't think that's fair, you know, where other entities do get reimbursed. Maybe, Mr. Montalvo, if we could research that and see if it's only the counties. I know the state government kind of holds us at a different standard, but I don't think it's fair.
Your Honor, at one time, I remember we had a $5,000 allowance.
Yeah.
We had a $5,000 allowance in the budget. For whatever you went to anywhere else and you took some guests with you, where you were out there, those you would get those money, had those $5,000.
If we were to have a line item in the budget, could we do it?
I would say no. Because let's say for that, like meals, those are fringe, fringe benefits for an employee. That's going to be taxable, it's going to have to go to payroll and then on your W2.
I can understand that, Ms. Alize. If I go to have supper and I want to pay for the county to pay for my meal, I can understand that's that's a plus for me.
Yes.
But if we're going to pay for guests that come into the county, then it's not for us. It's to pay for someone else.
And I guess that's more like, let's say, ah, it's a little.
And again, I don't want to, you know, get into a debate, but maybe if you could research that.
Okay.
And, Mr. Montalvo, if you could research that.
I think you should do it because, you know, if somebody is doing it, we don't have to follow what they're doing, you know. If it's not a statute, we don't have to follow it, we set the rate or whatever.
As long as we don't break, as long as we don't break the law. Okay, but I guess for now, this is what we have and this is what we need, have to follow, so.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second? Second, any further discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Did you go back to that item nine?
Monday?
Did you go back to nine?
Oh, okay, yeah. Ms. Gara.
Yes, sir.
You had an item to go out for bids on hauling services for the transfer station?
Yes.
What's that about?
Okay, the contract that we had with, for the hauling services, already expired, Judge and Commissioners. So when I spoke to our county attorney, if we needed to go back on bids, he recommended that we did. And just so that I can, you know, get everyone's blessings, I put it on the agenda so that you can allow me to go out on bids again.
And the contract says that we can do it without having to.
Yeah, I think the contract was only for a year.
Yes, sir, it was just for a year.
So now we need to go out again.
I also move you.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye.
Thank you.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item and this is to approve a resolution authorizing the county to submit an application for 24 to the AAA, the aging for the nutrition program.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge, is our annual application for the nutrition services and transportation.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Hey, where are we going to get the vans, you don't know?
We're working on it, we did the application and we're waiting for a response.
It takes about two years before you get it.
I have a motion in second, any further discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 16 is similar and this is to approve a resolution for CJ D. Grant for the juvenile intervention service program for 24. I don't see this here, but this is the same as what we had last year, this is just to apply for it.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item, I guess 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21. Can we take all those together, Mr. Ramírez?
Yes, Judge, I'm not on 17.
I'm sorry?
I'm not on 17.
Oh, that's right, okay, let me, my error. Let's go back to item 17. And this is an action item to accept the master site radio communication system interlocal between Stark County and City of Boston. This is the same as we had last year, right?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. 18 to 21 are Mr. Ramírez.
Yes, Sean.
And this, this are, well, that's a different item. This are just MOUs with the city of Roma, the school district in Roma, the police department and I believe La Ruya is a great.
Yes, Judge, good morning, gentlemen. Number 18 basically is an MOU with Roma PD. They, they have the software that we use to dump phones, to extract information from phones rather than us purchase the software, which is very expensive. We are asking the court to allow us to enter into an MOU with them, whereas we split the cost of the software. We already have an investigator who's trained on how to dump these phones. And instead of spending the, I think it's almost $7,000 to $8,000 for the software, we can split it and and use, use their, their software.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. 19.
19, 20 and 21, Judge and Commissioners, is just an MOU wherein we are donating firearms that have been seized and have been sitting around the Hyde Vault for quite some time. We're donating them to the Roma PD, to the Roma ISD Police Department and to the school district here in Beorande for use by their officers.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 20.
22.
Okay, but 20 and 21 were also the same.
They're donations of firearms to the different entities, Judge.
So is a motion for 19, 20 and 21?
Yes, sir.
And a second also? Okay.
I thought you two come all together, all four?
No, because 18 was different.
You all say you remember any of them, I understand, that's why.
Yeah, yeah, they're all MOUs, but they're for different reasons. Item 22 is to approve an employment contract service agreement between 229th and Salinas.
Yes, Your Honor, that's an ongoing contract that is about to expire. Salinas, in her spare time, is training one of our employees who's fairly new on grant writing and how to submit the FSRs correctly. We'd like to renew that contract with permission of the court.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion in second, under discussion.
Thank you.
Well, I haven't taken a vote yet. One question on that, Mr. Ramírez. How long is that agreement for the extension?
Six months.
For another six months?
It's four, it's four months, I'm sorry.
Four months?
Four months.
Any other question coming? Not, Honorable fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Senator. Item 23 is an action item and it's to approve a donation of $400 to precinct one foot entry.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items 24 through 38 are budget amendments.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 39 through 43 are budget corrections, Ms. Alize.
Actually, it's through 42 or 43, I'm just forgetting.
Okay, so it's item 40 through 42.
Yes.
Motion to approve, item 40 to 42.
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And it is 1048 and pursuant to section 551.074, we're going to executive session.
Sorry, 43, you're not going to take it?
No.
No, there was a duplicate. Yeah, to discuss order of salaries, the Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal, the ASO billing claim summary and to discuss safety equipment. Will be out shortly. I've got 1150 and we're back in open session. Order of salaries, is there a motion to approve as? Have a motion in second to approve as presented, discussion. Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal and the ASO billing claim, but for information only, so no actions needed. And item 47, do we need any action on the safety equipment?
No, that was also just a discussion.
Just a discussion, so no action needed on, on that one either. So, last thing is to adjourn, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second, Honorable fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.